The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coulter. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vommer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Cruzen. Twenty present.
Quorum being present and us, everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to stand, please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. We suspend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar. Alderwoman from the second, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules to introduce a courtesy resolution, Resolution 190.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the second, second about Alderman from the 25th. Let me suspend the rules for introducing Resolution 190 to courtesy resolution calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Coulter. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vommer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Ortman. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Cruzen. Twenty-two, aye votes.
By your vote, it's staying in motion, Alderwoman from the second. Madam Clerk, please place Resolution Number 190 on the courtesy resolution calendar.
So noted.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Thanks to our excited second on that from Alderman Cohn, we were able to keep this secret just a little bit longer, but because my, um, the recipient of this resolution doesn't, is not really aware of what's going on, I need a constituent from the second ward to please assist me, and I would, at this time, ask if Lisa McNichols can please join me up here at the dais. Uh, Mrs. McNichols, we understand that you have a milestone that you have reached this And, um, thanks to you just kind of letting it out a little bit, and Alderwoman Davis getting a hold of it, our Mother Davis here, uh, we would like to honor you here today. So, have you ever spoke from the dais in your thirty years? Uh-oh. We'll see what we can do to encourage her. So, whereas, Ms. Lisa McNichols began working with the Board of Aldermen on January 26, 1986, and has recently hit a milestone of thirty years of faithful service to this body. Lisa has seen many Aldermen come and go, but her tenure is longer than that of any current tenure of any Alderman sitting today. Whereas Lisa loves to throw a party, so there's another reason to party, especially loves birthdays, including her own, which always lasts the entire month of December. Lisa loves to dance, and she loves to sing, and she graces us with her good humor and spirit, and makes the Board of Aldermen a wonderful place to work. And whereas Lisa has raised two sons, Conan and Quentin, and her mothering skills have definitely carried over to her work at the Board. Whereas Lisa looks out for her coworkers at the Board of Aldermen, always ready with the word of constructive advice, she offers encouragement when needed, a snack when someone is hungry, and a sweater when someone is cold, and she always controls the supplies we use, that going to her office is like walking into a day of Christmas. Whereas we enjoy her melodies when they flow throughout the office, and are happy dances when she is hungry and finally gets something to eat. Whereas it is rare to ever see her upset, or angry, or her good spirits lift all those around us. She has preserved, she has persevered, and she has helped all of us when we are in a need of a laugh. Whereas former Clerk Karen Divis has observed Lisa's colleagues become her family. Ms. Divis recalls her many lunch escapades with Lisa, as well as working with Lisa to keep another former clerk, Fred Stephan, in line. Whereas her colleagues know Lisa to be dependable, and honorable, a hard worker, and a woman who lives and practices her faith. Most of all, she makes us happy to come to work each day. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen and the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize this service, good humor, and thirty years of work, her work anniversary of Lisa McNichols, and wish her the best for the rest of her career at the Board of Aldermen. And you kind of know how the rest goes. Again, if it wasn't for Alderwoman Davis, I wouldn't have known about this, but this is quite a milestone. I mean, I've been here seventeen years, and I had to kind of count back my own self, but, um, as a constituent of the second ward, I would like to let you know Lisa volunteers at all the neighborhood events. She comes to our neighborhood meetings, she encourages her residents to come to the neighborhood meetings, she is the beacon of her neighborhood because she puts them in touch with me, and I'm sure other departments, or whatever necessary things that they need to help them get through their day and their retirement in the baiting area. So Lisa, we got you. And Alderwoman Davis would like to say a few things as well, and I'm sure some other Aldermen would like to also recognize you.
Well, first of all, congratulations, Lisa. You were one of the people when I came here, even though I knew about the Board of Aldermen. Lisa is the one who's going to tell you what's inside the Board of Aldermen. And she guides you through very gently, without saying an unkind word about anybody. And I appreciate that. She knows that many days we squabble down here and it gets a little ugly, but the key to all of it is, you leave it in this room, and you go on about your business, and you take care of your constituents. And so that's how she shares and works with the other assistance that we have to make sure that they understand the same. But one thing I do know about her, it's not just the second ward, she volunteers everywhere. I know that if I say I have an event going on, well, what can I do? I'll be there. And she works. She's not just wanting to be present, you know how some people just want to be present, be on the scene? No. She works. And I just appreciate her, I respect her a lot. Anytime you can dedicate yourselves to something this long, most especially something that carries so many different personalities and emotions on a daily basis, it says a lot for who she is, and she never changes, no matter what is going on. So darling, I don't know what your plans are when you leave here, whenever you decide to leave, but know that you have some transferable skills that are needed in this country, not just this city, but in this country. So I thank you. But then you know I gotta have flowers everywhere I go.
Lisa's trying to speak so she can get off here, but we want to keep her up here for Before we will let you, you know, go back down where you, you, she wants to get back down there so quickly. But you're gonna have to wait a minute. I don't know who stood first, but we'll start Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I name, nickname everybody in City Hall, and Lee Lee has not been that good to me. She beats me up all the time. But she keeps me in order, and I appreciate her, and I appreciate you, and please don't retire, and like Marlene, I want you to come in my ward and help out in the fourth ward when you retire, okay? God bless you and your endeavors.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President, and esteemed colleagues. Lisa, I don't know, after thirty years, you sure, sure holding together pretty good. I want what you're having. But I want to commend you on your service, you're a very positive person, and I would like to move that we, um, make this an embank.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the fourteenth, second about Alderman from the ninth. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make another copy of that resolution embank.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, a slight correction, there is one member of our board that was here before Lisa. Well, he was here the first time, so you know, he came back twice too. Okay, so, uh, but, um, when I came here in ninety-one, there were three people that are still here, that is Lisa, Donna, and Sherry was here, um, previously too, she's also returning. And I want to just say that when I was gone, and I didn't come down here in those times, but if I ever needed to call and talk to somebody or find out something, Lisa always still treat me with the utmost respect and would help me. She is exactly the kind of person that you would want to work in any position. In fact, uh, oftentimes I've tried to get Lisa to move up, she's never wanted to do it, she just denies it, oh, no, that's all right, I like what I'm doing. And I really have to appreciate that, Lisa, if you like where you are, it is not up to me or anybody else to tell you where you should be. It's not many people who like to come to work every day and like their job, and when you have somebody that's like that, and they do it so skillfully, and especially when you got these twenty-nine people down here that you have to deal with, along with employees, I want to say, uh, what a great thing that is. And to speak to the Alderwoman from the fourteenth talking about, uh, how well you've held up, we all know your secret, what did you used to be, was it the prom queen or the homecoming queen? One of these. I can't remember which one, but that's why her beauty still shines through, because she's been a beauty for a lot of years, and I want to thank you for all your service, your beautiful inside and out.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues for indulging me for a moment or two, uh, to recognize Lisa. And of course, you know, I'd be remiss not to mention how beautiful she is, and also what a fashion icon she has been through the years. For those of you that aren't familiar, in the halls of, uh, City Hall outside the Board of Aldermen, we have photos hanging, and you can witness the progression of Lisa and the sense of fashion throughout the history of our country the last thirty years as well. I wish I could, uh, take one of those photos down and have it blown up for me here. Uh, I think particularly it was nineteen ninety that was, uh, especially stylish, so, um, but in all seriousness, uh, Lisa, I've, uh, well, maybe a little bit of, uh, jocularity here, but, uh, I've, I'm, what, thirty-five years old now, and, uh, to put it into perspective, you know, so it's, it's truly remarkable, you know, having worked in human, having worked in human resources. You know, it's not typical for people in my generation to stay at a job for more than four to five years, and to have you here at the Board of Aldermen for thirty years, I think, is a gift. And, you know, for us to be able to have that institutional knowledge, you know, from the past thirty years that you've been working, not only with us as a deliberative body, but, you know, even the folks that came before us and the personalities, I've personally been able to lean upon you and ask questions over the years, and you've been able to provide answers that, you know, not only are timely, but also have that wisdom that comes along with it. And, um, it has just been an absolute joy to work with you down here, and I think, you know, to Mama Bear Alderwoman, Marlene Davis's point, you know, you, you recognize and you realize that no matter how contentious things get out here on the floor of the Board of Aldermen, that we try and keep it in this chamber, and that's where it belongs, is in this chamber, and, you know, we still maintain relationships outside of this chamber because we all have to work together for the betterment of our city. And you represent that probably more so than most of us in this chamber, and for that, I cannot commend you enough. And, uh, you know, thank you for all of your years of service to our city and for your friendship, it means a great deal, and I hope you have thirty more years down here.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Yes, President, members of the board, I too would like to congratulate Lisa. I haven't been here as long as all these other folks, but she's always been cheerfully helpful, I would like to say, whenever I've asked some dumb question, which I've had many, and she's always helpful, she's always smiling, so thank you very much.
Alderman from twelve.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Well, Lisa, thirty years, holy cow, you haven't even reached twenty-eight yet, I appreciate that. I met Lisa in nineteen eighty-seven when I came down here, um, working under Mr. Villa, and, uh, I remember back then, uh, her and Karen and everybody was here, uh, Joan, Joan Clark, Sherry and Dan Wabbe and us, but it's been a pleasure through all these years, and Lisa has always been helpful. But I learned one thing, if I ever came down and had an extra bag of chips or a Twinkie or something, I could get anything out of Lisa, that's, that's how you had to operate with her. And then you had a friend for life, but Lisa, thirty years, that really makes me feel old, because I've got about forty years now with this city, so, but you know what? We're like a fine wine, the more we age, the better things go, so I, I very much appreciate you, thank you.
Alderman from nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Lisa, first of all, I won't say anything to embarrass you. I don't know that that could ever happen. But if you've ever been out to any kind of gathering, and it might be a little slow or bored or whatever, if Lisa's there, she all of a sudden becomes kind of a life, you know, she'll bring it together, her, uh, just her, her, how do you say it, the, just you being you, you know, is, is great to be out, and I've been out several times, you know, at gatherings, and, and don't let the music start, because she'll be up there and, and it just becomes livelier. But the Alderman, Alderwoman from the second, myself, have been here the same amount of time, and, you know, you've always been pleasant, and you've always been a can-do person, whether you're at the front desk or in your office, you know, you're, you're there for us, no matter how old we are, or how young we are, or how much seniority we, we have. And I want to thank you for everything you do, and I can just tell you can't wait to get back down on your chair. So, thank you for everything that you do.
Alderman from the tenth.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, Lisa, it would just be so apropos that today, January twenty-ninth, you know what it is? It's Have Fun at Work Day. Aren't you having fun now? Thank you for everything you do, thank you, Lisa.
Alderman from eleven.
Thank you, Mr. President, good morning. Mr. President, I'd certainly join the assembled multitude in wishing Lisa the very best. To me, uh, I was the, um, president of the board from eighty-seven to ninety-five, Lisa got here about approximately the same time as, as I did. She's always been Lisa, Lisa and the cult jam. And until recently, she's going a little Bob Marley on me, but, uh, uh, she's been a steadying influence all these years. I hope she enjoys, uh, working with us as we, as much as we enjoy working with her. I think she's, uh, oftentimes the go-to lady, and that is commendable, and Lisa, uh, thanks for what you do.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to say congratulations, Lisa, after thirteen years. Um, I, well, no, I'm saying, I've been here thirteen years, that you've been able to put up with all of us, so kudos to you, congratulations.
Alderman from the eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
We, we want to save you for last, Alderman. We got, can you hold for a second? Because I know you have a special, you, you, yeah, hold one second, we're gonna get everybody else in, we're gonna let you bring it up. Any, uh, any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's time for you, Alderman.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Thirty years? Thirty years. You started when you were twelve. Thirty years here at the Board of Aldermen. Now, I have seen Lisa mad. I have seen, I have, I've seen her upset, I've seen her hurt, I've seen her deeply concerned, I've seen her when she felt like things were not going right, that things were not fair. I've seen the Lisa mad, the Lisa that thinks that things are not fair, the Lisa that's upset, the Lisa that's hurt, and no matter which one of those you are expressing, you still have a person of respect, a person who cares, and has sensitivity towards others. That is a rare combination. Sometimes when people get angry, they forget that, you know, we still can be people who care about others. Or that when we get upset, it's all about us at that given time, but that's not the Lisa that has, we have seen here at the Board of Aldermen, thirty years here at the Board of Aldermen, or at the City of St. Louis. I do not wish you thirty more. Unless, of course, you'd like that kind of punishment. But if you do, may you have the blessings that go with the type of beautiful personality that you bring to the table. You know, that life teaches us many lessons and gives us the opportunities. We can see the difficulties in front of us as being insurmountable tasks, or we can see them as growth potential. And I've seen you take each one of those obstacles in front of you, and view them as growth potential, and allow them to cause you to be a better person. That means you had to have a core structural piece in place from the beginning to interpret the world from such a optimistic and positive way. Thank goodness you decided to work here, and not somewhere, and not someplace else. So the flowers are not enough, the, uh, resolution is not enough for you, but recognize, it is these kinds of ways that we express, and people express, both their appreciation and their respect for what you have brought to the table. Thirty years? Congratulations.
I think it's all been said, let's all stand and give Lisa a round of applause. Lisa, we are so thankful for all the time that you spent here.
I'm just gonna say thank you. I was one hundred percent shocked, but I have enjoyed all my time here, I really have. And I do love what I do, because there were a couple of times when I thought I may leave, but I enjoy what I do, but I want to say thank you to each and every one of you, but I especially want to say thank you to my staff, because I tell people, and they don't know, I tell people all the time that as long as I've been down here, this has been the best staff I have ever worked with, because no matter what, they respect me, and they listen to what I have to say before they feel like they want to fuss at me about it. And I just love all of you, and I love my staff to death, and I just want to say thank
I'll ask the staff, if you guys can come up and take a photo with Lisa, but then I'd also would like the entire Board of Aldermen, after this, you guys kind of make your way Members of the board, if you guys would join us up here so we can get a photo with It's been moved and seconded, we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. With that, we'll return our regular order of business and induction of honored guests. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have today as my honored guest, Mr. John Bay Muhammad, all those from the Corbin's District Council, Jerome from the Lexus Collective Office, Percy Green, my very special guest is Tom Shepard, and last but not least, my son Sam Moore III.
Alderman from the 23rd. I'd like to have as my special guest Gary Atten from the Painters Union, from the carpenters, Todd Hake, Marvin Sanders, Jeff Hansson, Keith Taylor from the Labor, from the firefighters' Local 73, Dan Clark, Al from Fire, Percy Green III. I got a few here. From Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, I have Frederick Cease Jr. And we also have a candidate for Attorney General, Teresa Hensley over in the corner, and I'd like to have all of them as my special guests. Alderman from the 14th.
Ah, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest today my son Brandon Fraser Bosley.
Alderman from the 7th.
President, members of the board, I'd also like to have as my special guest former Cass County prosecutor and Democratic candidate for Attorney General, Teresa Hensley.
All the women from the 14th.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have as my special guest Demetrius L. Alfred from Firefighters Local 73, housed in the beautiful Bevo neighborhood. Also, my constituent Clinton McBride, representative from the Labor's Council Local 110, and Gary Atten from the Painters District Council Number Two. Thank you.
All the women from the 1st.
President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest a couple of second and third generations, Mr. Steve Roberts Jr., and his father was my predecessor at the board as the 20th Ward Alderman, and also Percy Green III, whose father is a great civil rights icon in the city of St. Louis.
All the women from the 2nd.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today Antoine At Cousins, the Executive Director of Riview West Floris and Development Corporation.
All the women from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today Anthony Lencia with the AGC of Missouri.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest Martina Johnson, St. Louis Association of Realtors. Thank you.
Alderman from the 27th.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest Mr. Leonard Johnson from the Treasurers Office and John Collins. Thanks.
Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Somebody should welcome David Sweeney to the Board of Aldermen. Proud son of the Mississippi River Bluffs in Iowa. Welcome, Dave.
Welcome, Dave. And we have a couple other special guests with us. Rodney March, better known as Hot Rod, and his partner Rita Renee. Could you guys please stand up? They have started a new newspaper called The Social. You've probably read it, and if you haven't, you'll be able to pick it up downstairs. They have distributional through Columbia and all kinds of places across the city of St. Louis. We need to support them. This is a great business duo with strong roots here in the city of St. Louis, so we're so happy to see you here this morning. Let's give them a round of applause. We also have a guy you probably... You may know his name. His name is Dr. Tim O'Connell, our attorney's father. He's here today. It's your father. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lisa's making faces at me, but I have the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 6562, Mr. Frederick C. Cersei Jr., and everybody's special guest today is Lisa McNichols.
Any further inductions? Any further inductions? All the men from the 18th, recognized on approval at a minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for the approval of the January 22nd meeting.
Move by all the women from the 18th, second by all the women from the 9th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes. I have them as honor the mayor, the following correspondence. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Washington Place Special Business District. The appointment of Jason Johnson, who resides in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire on December 31st, 2019. The appointment of Melissa Moulton, who resides in the 28th Ward, and whose term will expire on December 31st, 2019. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
All the women from the 28th, recognized on the mayor's appointment to the Washington Place Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to confirm the mayor's appointments.
Move by all the women from the 28th, second by all the women from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Dispense with line items seven and line item eight. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items nine and 10. All the women from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to suspend the rules so that I might introduce Board Bill 290.
It's been moved by all the women from the 1st, second by all the women from the 6th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
All the woman Tyers.
Aye.
All the woman Flowers. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore. All the woman Hubbard. All the woman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Coulter.
No.
Alderman Conway.
No.
Alderman Ortman.
No.
Alderman Varmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. All the woman Murphy.
Aye.
All the woman Howard. All the woman Green. All the woman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. All the woman Davis. All the woman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter.
Aye.
All the woman Cruzon. President Reed.
Aye.
All the woman Flowers. All the woman Hubbard. Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz. All the woman Green. All the woman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey. All the woman Davis. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Williamson. All the woman Cruzon. 15 aye votes, 6 no votes, 2 present.
By vote, fail to stain the motion. All the women from the 1st. Introduce it next week, so the bill will have to be introduced next week. All the women from the 1st.
The bill will be introduced next Friday. They can't prevent it, so that's... I think that's funny. I always like to do this, I get two bites from the apple. I want to thank those people. That is what my plan was.
First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 284 sponsored by Alderman Tyers and Honors directing the director of streets to temporary close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Wabba Duh Avenue 75 feet east of the West Curb Line from Union Boulevard and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 285 sponsored by Alderman Ortman and Honors recommended by the Board of Public Services establishing a public works project for the traffic management enhancement phase three, which improves upon the means for the city to manage traffic and safety within the transportation network, including the establishment of a new real-time transportation intelligence center located at 1915 Olive Street and containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 286 sponsored by Alderman Ortman and Honors approving a redevelopment plan for 3139 Ohio. Board Bill 287 sponsored by Alderman Ortman and Honors approving a redevelopment plan for 3000 through 3014 Texas. Board Bill 288 sponsored by Alderman Ortman and Honors approving a redevelopment plan for 2813 through 2815 South 18th Streets. Board Bill 289 sponsored by Alderman Ortman and Honors approving redevelopment plan for 2862 Wisconsin. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bills 284 and 285, and to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills 286, 287, 288, and 289. That's the extent of reference to committee.
With dispensable line item 13, 14, and 15, and 16. Third reading and consent.
Board Bills 230, 231, 232, 234, 239, 240, 241, 242, 243, 244, 256, 257, 258, 259, 272, 273, 276, 277, and 278, 202, and 266, and 254.
Alderman from the 18th, you're recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Move by all the women from the 18th, second by all the women from the 9th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
All the woman Tyers.
Aye.
All the woman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
All the woman Hubbard. All the woman Ingracia. Alderman Coulter.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Varmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
All the woman Murphy. All the woman Howard.
Aye.
All the woman Green. All the woman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
All the woman Davis. All the woman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter.
Aye.
All the woman Cruzon. President Reed.
Aye.
All the woman Hubbard. All the woman Ingracia. All the woman Green. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson. All the woman Cruzon. 23 aye votes.
By a vote, stain the motion. All the women from the 18th and 3rd read and finally passed the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Dispense with line item 18, report of enrollment.
Board Bills 230, 231, 232, 234, 239, 240, 241, 242, 243, 244, 256, 257, 258, 259, 272, 273, 276, 277, 278, 202, 266, and 254.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session fix this signature here to the end that these may become law. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 189 sponsored by Alderman Boyd and All the Woman Cruzon. The Board of Aldermen support and urge other local leaders to support efforts to create jobs by expanding the availability... Expanding the ability of the USDA Rural Development Centralized Servicing Center to service federal student loans.
All the women from the 28th, you're recognized on the first read of Resolution Number 189.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would...
Can we have some order?
At the request of the primary sponsor, I would request that this go to the Rules, Engrossment and Resolutions Committee.
It's been moved by...